Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Leeser, Councillor Veroba, all in favor? Carried. Up next, the minutes of June the 9th, 2025. We have a motion to accept these. Councillor Elliott, Councillor Mouse, questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. On to original communications, delegations, and petition. Up first, we have the DBA Street Dance. Need a permit for July 20th, 2025. Mr. Godfrey, the microphone is yours.
Awesome, thank you so much. Great to be here tonight. I'm here representing the Estevan Downtown Business Association, and we're really excited to be having our street dance in 2025. And the most exciting part is it is going to be happening back down on 4th Street in the 1100 block, hopefully, as long as everything goes well tonight. But it's going to be really great. It's going to be on July 19th. We've got excellent entertainment lined up this year. Brayden King will be headlining, and we've got some great news. We're going to have an opening act as well that we'll be announcing in the next week or so here as well. But it's just going to be a really awesome way to show off the improvements that have happened on our 4th Street downtown. It's going to be great to show that off and get people centered in our community with that. So again, that's on July 19th. We do have tickets on sale right now, so you can get those on our website. That's downtownestevan.ca, or you can buy them in person. And we've got them available at a few DBA members, so ANA Jewelry, Exhale Massage Clinic and Day Spa, Henderson Drugs, Jenny Jones, and the LB Liquor Store all have those tickets available. So it's going to be a pretty great time.
Excellent. We have a little better excuse to party this year, too, with the recent announcement of the coal plant, so.
Absolutely no better celebration. We didn't want to take the credit, but really, this is the party for an announcement like that.
Sounds good. Excellent, excellent. We have a motion to accept. Councillor Veroba, seconded by Councillor Dubowski, questions, comments? All in favor? We will have a party July 19th.
Awesome, thank you so much, everyone, and look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you for coming in. Up next, the GFL report for May 2025. We have a motion to accept this. Councillor Mouse, seconded by Councillor Elliott, questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. And up next, another event permit. Prairie Prime Junior Stock Club needs a permit for this Friday, June 27th. We have a motion to accept this event's permit. Councillor Johnson, seconded by Councillor Elliott, any questions, comments about it? See none, all in favor? Prairie Prime Junior has a party this Friday. Up next, written reports of committee, Southeast Regional Library Board minutes of May 20th, 2025. Do we have a motion to accept these? Councillor Leeser, Councillor Dubowski, second it. Questions, comments about it? Nothing, see nothing? Oh, Councillor Mouse? Oh, sorry. All in favor? Carried. Jump in the gun. Sears Valley Museum is up next for the minutes of May 2025 as well. They have a motion to accept these from the museum. Councillor Elliott, Councillor Dubowski, questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, the Arts Council minutes of June. Oh, June. Somebody's a go-getter getting those in that quick for June, so we have a motion to accept the Arts Council minutes. Councillor Mouse, seconded by Councillor Dubowski, questions, comments? All in favor? Executive reports up next.
Southeast Transportation.
Southeast Transportation for May 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion to accept these? Councillor Leeser, seconded by Councillor Johnson, questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Executive reports. City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, amending dress code policy. Just let me get on the right page here. Oh, that's Wellack Road. I must have went by. Went by really far. Okay, that's, uh, item, Council Directive of Administration Review, However, Municipalities in Saskatchewan and across Canada, as well as other legislative bodies, address formal dress codes. We have a few options here, and the recommendation is that council amend and include the council's dress code in the city of Estevan's Dress Code Policy number 201661. Do we have a motion to accept this? Councillor Veroba, seconded by Councillor Johnson, questions, comments? Councillor Leeser?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to draw everyone's attention to the bottom of page one of the Policies and Procedures manual. Although our office and administrative staff are asked to wear casual business attire, you'll note that it does explicitly state there may be times when formal attire is required, such as city council meetings. So we are not looking at having council members meet the casual business. We are looking at asking council members to wear formal attire when in chambers. Is that correct?
Is that correct? I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that question. Councillor Veroba?
Thank you, your worship. I like the policy, but you're correct, Councillor Leeser. It should be a more formal wear in the council chambers. I believe that we represent the citizens of Estevan, and in order to do that, it's nice if we look presentable in an office setting.
Councillor Dubowski?
Thank you, your worship. I don't believe that for us to do our jobs and to be respectable, we are required to wear formal wear. I think if we're obviously at events representing Estevan, like FCM or Sumea, obviously, that's a different scenario. But within council chambers, I just don't think that it's necessary to require formal. I think what Councillor Mouse and, well, maybe a different style of color with Councillor Elliott's shirt and maybe my own, like, I think that's fine enough personally for what we should be wearing.
Okay, excellent. Quick, Councillor Mouse?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yeah, I think, I go along the same lines. I understand it should be clean, it shouldn't have advertising on it, it should be not cut-up jeans, things like that, no headwear other than religious or ethnic reasons. But I believe formal, that means shirt and tie, and I find that a little exaggerated for us.
Okay. Any other question? Councillor Elliott?
Thank you, your worship. I guess for me, when I was reading this, I found the language a little flowery. Attire policies are increasingly recognized as a mechanism to...
Use your mic. Sorry.
Apologies. Yeah, so the, I was finding the language a little flowery. It says attire policies are increasingly recognized as a mechanism to uphold institutional integrity and public confidence. And two things came to my mind reading that. One is that the integrity of this institution isn't affected if we all showed up wearing flannel pajamas, but we made well-informed decisions, the integrity is still held. And public confidence, I was thinking back to, I guess, the election, and there's enough people in the public, or Estevan's public, that had confidence. Matthew had a, at one of the debates, you had a t-shirt with a shirt and then like a flannel shirt. And it was, and I, nobody seemingly thought anything wrong with that. You still gained their, the public confidence despite that. So it was based on how you were, how you presented yourself, and of course, not wearing wild red Canada Day shirts, I guess, right? But I guess for me, we can add to the first bullet point, we can add jeans of good quality or jeans in that, as long as they're not torn, as long as we're not doing the fashion tears. Like for, I see nothing, nothing wrong with blue jeans being included in this, just for the simple reason that Saskatchewan, I mean, million-dollar, multimillion-dollar deals are made by people wearing jeans or even coveralls, right? And jeans have become business attire and have been so, well, I'm going to say 40 years that I've been involved in high-level meetings. Not that I am anymore, except for when the mayor is in my office, but the, past that, let's see. The third bullet point, shirts with collars or turtlenecks. Really simple, right? That's, that's easily done. Whole lot of limitation on, on shoes. I would just say comfortable shoes, because bad shoes, they might look great, but it's a great, it's a straight, straight line to a bad back. And under the inappropriate, the second bullet point, I would just, again, have all pants must be free of rips and tears, and just strike jeans from that line altogether. That would be my thoughts on these.
Councillor Leeser?
Thank you, your worship. For Councillor Elliott, there is a motion on the floor that we accept the policy and procedure as presented. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we do have to vote on that first before your suggestions could be integrated into a motion. I would like to also mention that when people are in formal attire, there is a noticeable change in how they present themselves and how they are perceived. And I think as elected officials, it is important that we do step into that role, especially when we're meeting with people who also complete their business in formal attire, such as bankers. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Councillor Veroba?
Yes, and I think just to keep in mind, what we're talking about is not just council, but also office and administrative staff. So if we're saying, let's change this and let jeans be a part of this, then we're essentially saying let's let all the city staff wear jeans to work.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of that. So I would like to proceed with the motion that's on the floor.
Okay. Any other questions or comments out there? Councillor Elliott?
And thank you, your worship. I would just say, with some people, your point may be applicable, but I'm going to say with most people, it's not. Most people are who they are regardless of what they're wearing is, that's my experience in general. So, but I do agree that some people will act differently if you throw a suit and tie on them.
Okay. Everybody's good? No more questions, comments? All in favor? So, up next, land development discretionary use permit, 326 4th Street. The applicant would like to use former Luxmith Building located 326 4th Street for the headquarters of the new taxi service. In addition to development permit, the owner has progressed with the other requirements of the city by, taxi bylaw and provincial regulatory standards. Recommendation is that the development permit application number DP 040 2025 for taxi business to be located at 326 4th Street be approved, subject to standard conditions. Richard, would you like to add anything before me?
Thanks, your worship and council. I'm only here to answer if there's any questions anyone has. It's fairly straightforward, I believe.
Okay. A motion to accept. Councillor Veroba?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I'll make that motion. Do you want my comments after? We're going to get a second.
Yeah, sure. Seconding, Councillor Leeser, questions, comments? Councillor Veroba?
Yeah, no, I think this is a great idea, because that business has actually sat vacant, and because it's on 4th Street, it doesn't look that good with being vacant. So, no, I think it's a great idea and definitely support it.
Excellent. Any questions, comments out there? See none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, bylaw, 2025 2097, repeal of inactive cemeteries bylaw. Would city clerk or assistant city clerk like to speak on this prior to getting told?
Your worship, I'll defer this to the assistant city clerk.
Josh, you're up.
Through your worship to the city clerk, thank you. We're just doing some legislative cleanup in the department of the city clerk's office, going through all the bylaws from 1957 up until now. And at this point, we've started off with the cemetery bylaws, and then we're slowly going to go down the list until we clean up all the redundant bylaws in the city.
Excellent. Thanks for that. So we're sitting with the recommendation, council approved bylaw 2025 2097 for first reading and repealing the inactive cemetery bylaws identified through the legislative review. Do we have a motion to accept? Councillor Mouse, seconded by Councillor Johnson, questions, comments out there? See none, all in favor? Carried. That was just first reading, correct? Okay, up next, bylaw 2025 2098. We have 1515 Wellack Road Development Proposal. City has received an application to develop property at 1515 Wellack Road for residential use. The proposal is to move an existing home onto the property. To approve this proposal, a development permit and zoning amendment will be required. Final comments, the housing industry is still undergoing a change that started in the early 1990s, and is opinion that housing produced off-site will become more common in the future, and that on neighborhood basis, sufficient criterion exists to ensure aesthetic and architectural compatibility. Land Development Services supports this proposal to change to the architectural guidelines on the technical basis that recommends that council consider first reading at the appropriate time. So this bylaw is basically changing, there was, that we pre-assembled modular or moved-in dwellings are prohibited within Hawks Bay right now, and then pre-assembled or moved-in dwellings within the residential properties fronting Wellack Road are discretionary development permit decisions, and development of the corner lot fronting Hawks Bay shall be orientated towards the bay. Do we have a motion to accept this bylaw for first reading? Councillor Elliott, seconded by Councillor Mouse, questions, comments? Councillor Veroba?
So I'm interested to hear from Richard, because I did speak with one resident on Hawk Bay, and they were in favor of this. So I'm just interested to see, because you said you were going to poll the audience, and what the results of that was.
Thank you, your worship, through to Councillor Veroba. I was able to get in touch with six of the landowners there, and the strong consensus was to allow for this proposal. There were some trepidations, however, if this one's approved, would the next one down the line be a lower standard again? I explained to that individual that anything, if this were to be passed, these would all have to be passed by council on an individual basis, and there would also be a referral out to each landowner as, with an appropriate amount of time for them to review and comment. And so I guess it comes down to how much trust there is, but the majority, definitely the ones I talked to, said yes, this would be good for the community.
Okay, excellent. Councillor Veroba?
So, thank you. Just another question. So the people that you didn't get in contact with, you did leave something in their mailbox and tell them that this would be getting, coming to council tonight?
I wasn't able to get in touch with them directly.
But did you leave something?
I haven't left anything. There's, I was going to do a follow-up.
Okay, so I guess my concern is, you're asking tonight for us to approve this, but we haven't actually spoken to everybody?
I guess what I can do in response to that is the, first reading is strictly an administrative matter. It doesn't state whether council's in favor or against proposal. It basically puts a number on the bylaw, so then I can do a formal referral out. One thing to stress, and the people that I did talk to, I showed them pictures that were released by the Realtor for the client who'd like to do this, and so they had it all up front. But that's different than them getting a formal letter saying, here's a proposal, what do you think? So it could be a different mix of responses that we get for a future public hearing.
Okay, so, yeah, this is first reading, so we'll be back.
It's purely administrative at this, at this time.
So we have a few, few weeks that'll be out there to get, and we'll be able to make that decision on July 14th, so. Uh, where are we at? Did we have, see, we had a secondary, everybody, questions, comments? Everybody's good? All in favor? Send it first reading? Carried. Public hearings, none, giving notice. Yeah, obviously, we've been blessed with a big decision from our government to extend the life of coal, to hopefully eliminate that little elephant in the room that we've had around us for the last few years, and we can get on with providing Saskatchewan with energy. So I'd just like to, to whom it may concern, I'm writing to express my full support of the government Saskatchewan's commitment to extend the life of Saskatchewan's coal-fired units. This is a generational decision that is a critical step toward protecting our province's energy security and economic stability. The leadership shown in standing up for Saskatchewan's interests and advocating for energy sovereignty is both necessary and appreciated. Coal has been a long, has been, a long been a cornerstone of Saskatchewan's power supply due to its reliability and affordability. Communities like Estevan and Coronac have built their livelihoods around this coal industry, and its continued operation ensures these communities with economic activity to grow and to provide the people of Saskatchewan with energy. So on behalf of city and council, I'd like to thank everyone involved for defending the importance of coal in our energy mix and investing in solutions that work for our province. So, thank you. Up next, motions from committee, non-consideration bylaws, inquiries. Councillor Veroba?
Thank you, worship. One thing I just called in is that just basically on the corner of Isabel, in the 900 block has a stop sign that had High Leads on it, so the city manager was going to look into that. I had another inquiry regarding the watering of the grass. They fill the city property, has it done nightly, and could it be done every other night or every third night? And I was kind of curious if, like, on King Street, for example, we have a lot of areas where the city had to fix, rating up against the curbing, and those are areas where when we do water, water's pooling. So if we're watering nightly and the water's pooling, are we actually damaging our streets by letting the water sit there every night? So that was just a question I thought maybe we could pose to roads and drainage. And then the other thing is the open house regarding the Aurora Group and their business plan and what they're going to roll out here in the city of Estevan. I've had a lot of inquiries to that. I haven't been able to provide any answers, because I, too, will be going to the open house on Friday, June 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. I believe everybody is welcome to come and see what they're going to put out there and see what they're going to bring to our community. I think the way they've put the signs up and are representing themselves so far has been a good sign, so I look forward to speaking with them on Friday, June 27th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Excellent. Thanks for that. Councillor Mouse?
Yeah, I've got one, thank you, Mayor Sernick. I have one question for city manager. We chatted at the last coffee about the paving stones next to Salvation Army there. Is that, is there, did you manage to get something done there? Sorry.
Thank you, Councillor Mouse, for the inquiry. Yeah, so I actually talked to the Salvation Army today. What we're looking at is if there's any additional paving stones outside of the initial scope of the work of the downtown project, we are going to talk to the contractor and figure out what a pricing looks for there. So we did only up to the property lines. There is some that have areas with inside their property lines that are outside the scope of the contract, but they'd like to clean it up. I know there are a few people down at the other end as well. So we're working with ASL. We're looking to see how many paving stones we have, and we're looking to price it out so that we can work with these people to hopefully clean up those areas, but know that it's not always a cost of the project, and that we'll work with the individual property owners.
Yeah, thank you. Then also, further on, Councillor Veroba's mention of Aurora, I was there last week, just dropped by for the fun of it. It, it should be very interesting what they're doing, and as she mentioned, there is an open house this Friday evening. Everyone is welcome. Please go by, inform yourself, they're very open, they're very willing to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for that. Councillor Elliott?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, just to remind people, with Canada Day coming up, Beanfeet does a lot of stuff out there, and the proceeds that they, that they gain from anything that there's, that they're charging for goes back into, well, playgrounds, rinks, along that line, so. And then if you're not going to Beanfeet, you've got in Kin Park, Hillside?
Hillside.
Hillside Park on the map, there's going to be the Kinsmen and Knetts giving away hot dogs and drinks and cotton candy, and all kinds of things to give your kids a sugar high. So you've got some options for Canada Day, just get out and celebrate.
Get out and celebrate, that's right.
Elbows up.
Elbows up.
Thank you for that. Trudy, city treasurer, anything tonight?
Anything, worship.
Josh, anything more to add tonight?
Nothing, worship.
Councillor Dubowski?
Thank you, worship. I would like to point out to the city road crews for fixing a lot of nasty potholes around town. It's appreciated, and they're doing a great job with that. As well, the LGBTQ and Allies events last week, I think, were a pretty great success. There was a lot of support there, and I think, you know, there was a lot of creativity, a lot of community with that, and so there's that. And then regarding the coal, it is certainly a monumental decision for the Estevan economy and, well, province in general, as well as the, the workers. But I do hope that it doesn't become a reset on the timer for our obligations to the environment. You know, we still have responsibilities for that, to hand off what we're keeping care of to the next future generations, and, you know, make sure we're still doing our part on that with maintaining this decision.
Excellent. Thanks for that. Councillor Johnson?
Hi to Estevan City Council. I don't have any inquiries this evening, but it's good news to hear that what's happening with the coal in Estevan with the continuation of coal-fired power plants in Estevan and in Coronac. It's good work for everyone that's involved in mining and in the coal industry. It's good to see that we have future life in those industries to bring prosperity to Estevan and business, and I, it's welcomed, really, really welcomed. It really helps us out a lot. And it's good to hear that we've done such good lobbying with the provincial government, and they've done some good lobbying for us with the federal government. So great, great strides and great, great honors by all parties. So that's, that's my inquiry this evening, and, you know, we have to move along in those other areas as green energy and the nuclear is, is down the road, but right now, we need something that's going to help us all. And then, and basically, we have it here in Estevan. We are the energy capital. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all my inquiries this evening.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Councillor Leeser?
Thank you, your worship. Just wanted to draw the community's attention to the play park schedule for the summer. Our play parks offer crafts, activities, and games in the mornings, and swimming in the afternoons. There have been lots of families talking about how difficult it is with both parents working to be able to go out to these free events in the community. And so if people take a look online, there is a weekend swim each week, as well as one or two nights a week that these play parks, swimming pools, the slip and slide are available to make use of. Thank you.
Thank you for that. City manager?
Anything to add, worship?
City clerk? I just have a bunch of congratulations, obviously, first to the Estevan Exhibition Society for another successful fair and rodeo. Looked like a bunch of people went through the gates, which is excellent, excellent, and the weather held off until the very end, I do believe. And then obviously, congratulations to the ECS class of 2025, and then also congratulations to every kindergarten and grade eight graduation out there. So everybody's been busy doing that the past week, and that's all I have. Do I have a motion to move into committee? Councillor Elliott, Councillor Johnson, all in favor? We'll move into committee.